Residual cost of having a vehicle, right, the fuel, the maintenance and all those things. So right now it's not in our budget, so we're just taking it out of the version. Um, and so we're doing what we have to do. But we estimated about four thousand, again, you know, gas prices and things like that. We're hoping to have very little maintenance on the progress side until it changes, but just never know.
Alright.
Um, so that's where we got that number. Um, I've got, which one is page ten, eleven?
Four D is.
Four D prosecutor, okay.
Twenty seven.
Okay. Okay, so I'm on the four D prosecutor budget. So for some reason, and Marie brought this to my attention, I don't know how this happened, but everything got taken out of the four D prosecutor budget, meaning, uh, the office supplies got taken out, postage, mileage, and then, uh, money for conferences and meal, for conference lodging and meals. I, I don't know if that's something I did, it probably is. Um, it's, okay, it was inadvertently done. Um, we need those things in there. Um, and so on that one, I asked for a five percent increase for the four D prosecutor and the four D administrator. The office supplies, we asked for a thousand dollars. It's at zero right now. Um, for postage, we asked for a thousand dollars, mileage, five hundred dollars, and four D conference lodging and meals, fifteen hundred dollars. We based that on, this year's kind of an anomaly. We didn't, they're not doing conferences and stuff in person, not even for us. We're doing a lot via webinar. I don't know how long that's gonna continue. Um, and so we, we estimated those on two thousand nineteen's budget, what we had in two thousand nineteen. So that's where we got those, those estimates. Um, and then go to the.
Pre-trial.
Pre-trial. Forty nine. Find it here. Pre-trial budget, yeah, okay. Now, these numbers, we, again, Marie said this before, I think it's, well, I think it's stupid that we've gotta budget this account to the state when we're not asking for funds from the county. Uh, this budget or this, uh, account is totally funded, completely funded through pre-trial diversion programs. So if somebody, uh, has a first offense or, uh, somebody, maybe their second offense, but they've got a very limited past or it's a very old past, we may offer them an opportunity to participate in the diversion. Um, and you can participate in diversion through, for a traffic ticket, there's one program for that. And then there's another program for misdemeanors, and there's another program for felonies, and they're all different prices. This account is completely funded through those, through the public. It's not funded from the county in terms of the county budget anyway. And so these numbers, in essence, it appears I'm asking you to fund these numbers and these different line items. That's not true. I, I'm not asking, I mean, you guys don't give me a zero, a single dollar for this account. So those numbers, we inflated, um, because we wanna, we have to, when we take money out of the account, we have to put what line item we want that money to come from, right? Um, but we can't, let's say I have twenty thousand dollars in the account. I can't then go write a check for thirty thousand dollars out of the diversion account. Right, it just doesn't work. We can only spend what's in the account. But we have to be able to put it under a line item within that account. And if we run out of money in that line item, then I have to come ask you for appropriation, which is really not an appropriation. I just have to ask you for permission to take more money out of the account and write the check for that line item. Does that make sense?
That's not true.
Okay.
The money, even though it's pre-trial diversion, when it goes into the county coffers, it's then officially counted on. It must be appropriated from the account.
Sure.
So he cannot spend more than's, than's in there. He also cannot spend any of it unless you give him the authority to do some, by appropriation. And, and this one appears to be not funded, funded on the worksheet on the eighteen line.
But it's not funded by them. It's funded by county citizens. It's managed by them.
But that isn't any different than health fees. I mean, it's, it's.
Well, maybe, I, I'm not saying that it is different, but I'm not, I'm saying that I'm not asking them to give me a hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Well, your point's taken. Your point's taken, yeah.
Well, they still have to appropriate.
Right, and that's why we inflate the numbers on the line items, so we don't have to, so I don't have to come before you and say, hey, on line item for operating supplies, we only had five thousand dollars. We spent five thousand dollars under operating supplies this year. We'd like to buy a, a new computer for a thousand. Then I have to come and ask you for appropriation under that line item, which, again, to me is silly. Uh, so I inflated the numbers, so we don't have to do that. Does that make sense?
What she is trying to say is if you only have fifty thousand dollars in your fund, your account.
Under the proposal.
You know, in your fund. And that's, that's what you need to appropriate. You can't appropriate more than that, even though. You can't appropriate more than what you expect to bring in. Yes, there you go.
Well, what do you expect?
We do our year.
What do you expect to bring in, plus your cash flow?
But you're saying what you expect to bring in.
Yes, what we expect, but we, but we may, we may bring in more. We may bring in less, we don't know.
Well, that's a DLG of thinking, so like if, if you budget.
It's all about semantics.
Two hundred thousand dollars and they look historically and it's only ever had a hundred in it, they're not gonna say yes to two hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Because.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um.
So what, what were the?
But I mean, that's why we have inflated numbers there, so we never have to come ask you for. So we never get in a situation where we say, okay, we've got the money in diversion, we wanna spend it on this, but we don't have enough under that line item to, to spend it. Again, this is all, it all seems very silly to me that we've gotta have the county.
Welcome to me, guys.
I understand, so, it's just other things that's weird, it's.
Unfortunately, it's called transparency.
Right, but, and I don't have a problem with transparent, I just have a problem that when the public sees this, I guarantee they think I'm asking you for a, to fund this account for a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And that's, I'm not asking for one penny to fund this account. I don't think the county can fund this account. I think it has to be from diversion program fees.
We're not saying this.
Right.
We're just like, tell you how.
No, I understand how it works, I just don't agree with it. So that's, that's my.
It sounds like we just gotta volunteer to go to the, uh, state legislature.
Sure, 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 sure.
Advocate for.
I can give you a whole other list of stuff too, if you're gonna go down there and do that.
No, I'm not going, that's why we haven't, that's why we haven't.
Yeah, that's right, so, so if, that, that account is a little bit different because we do have to ask you to appropriate the funds for, to fund that account, but we're not taking money out of taxpayers' pockets in terms of money from the county budget. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
And so that's why we did that. Um, and that's it, I think, right?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, sure. Any questions for me about anything?
How's the, uh, investigator affecting the, uh, workload and cases?
Well, it's awesome, frankly. Um, if they get an overnight arrest, it's awesome to have somebody go down and talk to the person next morning. It's made our cases much more settler. Um, gathering evidence is a thousand times better, uh, now, and so it's been, it's been awesome. We've got more. Now, this year's a little bit different, right? Because when COVID came on forward, it was, um, you know, maintain distance, only respond in certain situations. I mean, there were, there were just certain rules shared and that everybody put in place. Um, and so we didn't have as many arrests over the COVID period. We're starting to ramp back up to that and, uh, really starting to see the effect of Stevie in there now. Um, and just making, the big thing is making our cases so much stronger. Um, we have a backlog of trials, obviously, because we've missed, what, six months now, right? Um, and so we're gonna have a bottleneck of trials from all the cases from two thousand eighteen to nineteen. But I foresee in the future, we're gonna have a lot less trials because our evidence is more better. And that's really the thing. Um, and so, yeah, I think it's been awesome.
I'll piggyback on that comment, and I've known and heard for years, Steve just has this way about him. He can get somebody to spill everything because of his demeanor and how well he treats them.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's amazing how he gets the information he does.
Well, I mean, it's not, it's not just coincidence, you know, the stars are aligned, right? That he just happens to get a confession and an apology letter on eighty to ninety percent of his cases, right? That's not just happenstance, that's because he's so good at what he does. And there's no joke, he will get, nine times out of ten, he will bring an apology letter with his report from the defendant. It's, it's unbelievable. I, I don't know, he needs to teach a class, frankly. I mean, because, uh, he's just so good, I mean, God's right, he's just, he's amazing.
How do you scan Indiana, listen to news, so she can?
Oh, sure. That's all I got, if you have any questions, let me know.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
What do I do with mine?
We just, uh.
Thanks.
Hi, guys, I don't even have my paper.
Hossa is on fifty eight, fifty nine. Uh, so how's the joint thing going?
It's going great, I think. Um, Ned Thompson has been great to work with in North County. We've got, um, struggled a little bit here with, with COVID, so we had hoped to have two classes this year. We're probably only gonna end up with one, we're short by six more volunteers on September third. And so that will bring us up to almost forty active volunteers between the two counties. We currently are covering every single case with volunteer. I don't even have any cases that I haven't covered as JAL, so we're doing awesome. Um, funding, we're overbunded for twenty twenty because, again, I've been on training class, so I'm gonna have quite a bit of carryover. I'm not asking for anything additional from either county, other than just the match, so we get the full, um, state grant. And I had previously said that right down to y'all, but it's obviously what I'm doing here. I can't, are y'all paying how much?
Sure, of course.
Don't you create one of them, yeah. Is it, is it more than two thousand or two thousand and more?
For Carroll County? No. I wanna say Carroll County is like six, White County was open nine or ten. Wonder if white people left the email from this day. It was less for Carroll County for twenty twenty one than it was for twenty twenty. Did you have, did you have that, that email that I sent you?
That's a complete.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
When I initially submitted my budget, I would show what's the White County grant, Carroll County grant, White County match, Carroll County match. And then we do get our capacity going grant, we just not have a match by the accounts. That is the funds thing that was on, uh, Saturday. Y'all wanna wait till three thirty for me? Call on three thirty.
No, it's, alright.
Is that me?
Appreciate your work on this, and, uh, I know you gotta get on the road.
Yeah, that's okay, we're, we aren't doing anything fancy or different than what we have been doing. We just have a little bit bigger budget from the two counties. Um, I anticipate that Carroll County will continue to be the operating county for that. Ned Thompson is looking to do that, and I don't think Ned Thompson has a problem with it, just since it's always come through here. Um, they've not, I basically will pull, uh, this year, it's only once a year, so I'm, I'm doing. Um, usually I do two pulls from White County, from Carroll County, and then we'll all play them through here, so I don't need to stay any too long.
Everybody have any questions? Appreciate your work.
Thank you so much for your support of our program, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
You safe?
Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Yates.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
No, 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 I'm way early too. Hopefully mine is the easiest of the day. I know you guys are very good here, for sure. Mine is, other than a few small things, is I tried to keep it as close as I could as last year. I was the last year, I started, and three days later I was in front of you for, for a third year. Um, so this year.
Like an old pro.
Huh?
You're like an old pro now.
I'm about that. Um, so we asked for a couple of different, uh, changes here, one with the salaries. Uh, approach you guys, I believe it was last month or month before. Um, I'm not gonna go into a whole lot of that, I mean, you guys kinda know where I stood with that, and I know money is tight. Um, I'm asking for, um, a little extra for my, my office staff, who does a great job for me. I know things are tough, so whatever can be done with that is appreciated. Um, mine, I took the FEMA class. Part of my agreement was, when I passed this class and I passed the test, I would get to the regular salary that was, uh, for this position. I took the one week cla, uh, class in Tennessee. When I'll get a, a chance to take the test, I have no idea. It's a three hundred test question, or it's, it's a big, big process, and if you don't spend a month on only that, you're wasting your five hundred dollars taking the test. So with everything that goes on in this office, I don't know what I'll do to take it. So I did take, I did pass the part in Tennessee, so I am, uh, acting floodplain administrator, I have been since day one. Depending on the retirement group insurance, that's all, of course, um, what's standard for the, the county insurance, office supplies. Um, I kept that at what it was last year. Just like anybody else, when we were down for a couple of months and running everything out of the office, paper went up because I was hand delivering everything, and there was, things had to go different, just like every other office in Florida. Email accounts, um, I don't know how it happened, but last year, Donnie asked for a lot less than what we needed. I think it ended up coming to twelve ninety-six, something like that. Twelve seventy-eight for all the accounts, so I ended up doing some, some change in and got the money to cover all those. So that thirteen hundred, eventually we're gonna wipe out and cover every account that we need. For every board member, myself, and Gloria as well. Special development, um, just like Nick said, I haven't had a chance to do a lot of the trainings I'm supposed to be doing. They are all through webinar instead of going in person. This is kinda the world we live in, but most, most of the time those cost, so I haven't poured in a whole lot of the money this year, but, uh, I do have to get a few things paid this month as far as the floodplain, FEMA in the state that you have to be a member of, uh, as part of these floodplain administrators. So, um, my attorney, I asked for a small amount of the attorney fees, a thousand dollars. Obviously now we have the vehicle. Vehicle is a great asset, so I just asked for a little money to put tires and, uh, a few small things on it. None of that, it's a good vehicle, and that one's not giving it quite that, so really not a lot of changes other than the vehicle, so. Hope your mind's pretty rough, I have a lot of questions.
Um, I think you spoke to this a little bit, but I just wanted to clarify, do, do you believe that the, your pay is contractually obligated to rise, or you just established this number off of?
I don't know that I ever signed a contract. I signed a piece of paper saying when I passed the test, wherever. I don't know that I signed it.
But that test is the one you could not take in yet, right? Or did?
No, I did the, I did the class, which is the.
You did the class?
One week in Tennessee, through FEMA and the state of Indiana, you had to take it.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gone for a week, so that, that part I did. So I don't know if I signed a, a contract per se. I just, in essence, I'm doing the executive record position and the floodplain manager for what I'm doing now.
On the salary ordinance, it says floodplain administrator salary, and salary will be forty-six, three eighty-one when training is completed. So I price on.
So I actually lowered, I kinda cut myself.
When training is completed, does it say anything about passing the test?
It just says when training is completed.
So I kinda cut myself out.
Consider without passing the test, it's not completed.
Well, you're, I'm doing, I'm acting as floodplain administrator, making decisions that floodplain administrator should add my salary now, so. Yeah, and that's, I haven't had a chance to take the test, that's, if I would need to take a month's vacation, I guess I'll do that. But at this time, I don't, I don't ever see me taking it this year, because of everything that's going on. COVID, we're behind, we're, we're, something to do for me, so, um, yeah.
Good point. Well, is there a legal, is there a legal?
I just wanted to.
Legal, like a, you're not certified, stamped.
That's what you do.
Yeah, I gave it all to everybody that worked out there, FEMA, uh, and, you know, obviously.
Can you help me on just a little bit, Cameron? So are you, you're a certified floodplain administrator?
No, that's what you had to take the test for.
So.
I am an acting floodplain administrator.
Acting floodplain administrator.
Well, under the state of Indiana and the county, I am the flood, I'm the floodplain manager. So, and this is common throughout Indiana and the United States.
Oh, well, I'm just trying to get.
What does your certificate say?
Just have it passed.
Okay.
It's from FEMA saying you passed your four D, you had to take this class to take this test, you can't just go take the test. There are some counties in Indiana and the United States that don't have, that have someone that's from the street department, that's us. So it's not uncommon for someone not to have that test and make the decisions. So the, the class I was in, there was a, quite a few people that were, didn't know what COVID was, so. It's, it's, it's a tricky test, and there are people that take it several times and they just can't get that, so.
Cool.
Yep, so that's one of the questions I've asked when I got hired, we didn't want to take this part on too, so. Not knowing the whole scope of it, I said, sure. Here we are, so. But I, I'm learning it, there's a lot to it. We got a lot of bodies of water in the, in the county, and I'm enjoying it, but I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie, it, it, there's a lot to it on top of everything else that goes on here, so.
Awesome.
Good job.
Anybody else? Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you having us there for us, Cameron.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, Donnie's on the way up.
Is that a bathroom break?
I have a picture I want to show you. First come, first served. Is that an interesting question?
Yeah, I just wanna be taken.
Or.
You're, well, you're an attorney, but you're not, you're not a lawyer.
I have a, I have a, I have a law.
That's a legal difference. Or if you're, you're a lawyer, but I forget what's on there. You can have a JV, not a law. Donnie, how are you, sir? Thanks for coming up on short notice. Go ahead, any, any overarching thoughts?
Um, I, but, uh, we were coming back, we put these together, we come back to, you know, for two months. So I did kinda go over today, um, some of what I had to ask for, and, um, I don't know, um, maybe, um, I guess the salaries, I guess the first thing. Um, I just put in a five percent for, uh, man and deputy, have they explained?
Yeah.
Okay. What the question got from, um, but I could on that extra, well, I could go ahead and go down to a thousand on that. Knock some money off there. Um, also, um.
May, I, I just have a technical question, Brad. Um, why did you change it from first deputy to deputy surveyor? Was that just? Well, there's two lines.
Because. I see what you're saying.
I think it was, I think it was deputy, it's right back when, um, Wade was here.
That's what I.
He was part-time, and.
I just, okay, I mean, it doesn't matter, it's.
I'll fix that. Should be the same line.
As first application. Right?
Well, you changed it, I forgot, I think you was doing for it. Probably. Yeah.
That's okay, that's easy fix.
Okay, um, then down to supplies, hundreds of two thousand, um, office supplies, I could probably go down to five hundred on that. We've not had them used as much the last few months. We can get enough of our stuff out of this year, get the color and all of that, so. And then, uh, the tapes and pens and stakes and irons last year, you guys wiped that out and could do that again too. It's three hundred dollars total, between the two. Probably seventy, seventy one.
Yeah, both of them out.
Yeah, I, I, I moved stuff, the contract down anymore or something like that for it. And, uh.
On mileage and meetings, you can use the, the fund, right? The, uh, elected, licensed officials training fund?
Um, for a lot of the meetings, I can't get it.
Okay, you still need this, because I saw you got used in a couple of years.
Yeah, I mean, well, when I, when I first done that, mainly it was for, uh, in case the county vehicle broke down, I'd use, I'd use my truck, I'd have someone to take money out of mileage claims there.
Can we pay mileage now out of?
We now can, that's new this year.
That's where I thought, okay, so we can, we can pay.
But it also has certain meetings, it's not all. Only, it's only the meetings approved by state board of council, AIC.
Well, this one here was for, like, my daily, running around meeting contractors and stuff like that, to, that, that mileage covers that too, if I have to use my personal vehicle.
Oh, I see.
So it kind of was a joint, and there was other meetings that, um, if, at certain times, there were certain meetings that I could attend that wasn't on the, the list approved by the AIC, so. Now they are, I think, a lot of the time.
Okay.
How much was in that?
See, like, he has a road, you can go to road school, sometimes that's not qualified, so, things like that. Not county, county road training, I don't know, road schools like this. I don't know, it's just AIC. You could be right on that. The survey, the surveyors have a list that they have gotten through.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. But then, uh, everything else, um, on the, even the three thousands can stay same. We could go down to five hundred on the postage, that we can get enough stamps, uh, this year. Um, main thing we were looking at is with, uh, Snyder redoing our watersheds. We're gonna have, uh, one time mass mailing, all, tell the watershed owners, tell them that some of them's made better, some of their assessments have changed, if they wanna come in and see us type thing. So, and we thought the issue was, I don't know if that's gonna make it this year.
That comes out, your budget or are the other one?
Comes out of our, we just kinda combined everything in mind, being those.
Okay.
Pretty much, I think, so definitely we having a drainage floor budget, it's just prepared for, for minutes and stuff like that, mailing, some mailing's out of that, so.
Okay. Do your computers and software, did that, do you have something specific that that went up for, or is it just a contingency?
No, I, um, I just put five hundred in there, just, I mean, because I guess, but I do have to have a monitor or a, a tower, it's probably gonna be more than five hundred anyway, more likely.
Did you get all your computers when we did the thing?
Um, I had just got one a year before, or a year before, so, um, we did get one for Beth replaced, and, but, uh, the monitors are, my monitors are a couple of year ago, for the, the tower, we just got the tower, that's all we did. So we did get another couple of new monitors for, uh, Beth's, like, year or two ago, so.
Okay.
But if you want to put that down, I had two fifty, I use it covers a monitor, if I have to replace one, I mean, but, but if I get a, tower goes down, I can always ask for a official or something.
Okay. Any thoughts, questions on the surveyor budget?
No. I did have on furniture fixtures, um, last year I did get a flat, a survey flat cabinet, but this year we're looking at, we got a, some small, they're narrow, it doesn't have slots in them, we got a bunch of plans since we moved, that we found and like to get indexed in no order, I have to stick it in organized fashion, so maybe looking, try and do something like that next year. So, we're kinda looking at it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, uh, let me look for, drain this board real quick, I mean, this, nothing there. Board, are you, are you increasing the board member pay?
Um, I, I put down the thirty, I don't know if, I mean, it's been a while since it was changed, I think, it's, I think I did. I guess, then we, I had to dash for, um, five hundred dollars or something like that, higher for the legal advisor, just kinda normal stuff put in every year, a little bit, he say, raise them. This year we haven't used a whole lot, we didn't have meetings for March, or no, we didn't have one March, we didn't have April, May, June, we didn't have meetings, so that's why I've got some extra money in that, and with everything else going on, I haven't tried to do any joint boards or anything like that. We do have a couple, um, people who are competition. We do have a couple, um, people want petitions together for a couple of greens that will be a joint board, so. And that's why we have an extra money for board members. We do have to pay that, it'll be maintained by Carol Cannon. A lot of times, uh, we did one deer creek and it was, what, eighty dollars a meeting? But that covered our mileage and everything too, so. That's why I kind of bumped it up a little bit.
Very good. Questions? Good work done, thank you.
Thanks, Alan. Hey, Troy, Troy Hoffman's was asking when he should count, not now, but what, half hour?
His scheduled time is what I was thinking for him. Yeah, he's scheduled for eleven. So, yeah.
So it's, uh, like at eleven thirty, okay.
Callie, you wanna get after? Number one.
We all intend with this for the first budget, the first budget is the imaging. I have the licensing, I have to get it done up. And it is, uh, two hundred ninety-one, so I think I'm sure I'm up to it now.
Which line is that?
Four thousand twenty-three.
And what do you need in there?
It's our licensing for this software for the imaging. I just want to make sure there's nothing under that bill.
You want that to move down before?
It, well, I've asked for three thousand, which will cover the bill. Last year it was short, a couple two hundred dollars.
Oh. Oh, so you're saying twenty-six ninety-one is the?
It is the actual bill, so I want to make sure that it's not, if you guys drop it down to twenty-five hundred, I will.
Oh, so it went up, it looks like from nineteen to twenty, from twenty-four fifty-seven to twenty-six ninety-one. Is it gonna go up again or?
I don't, if I had the three thousand, it would be covered.
Okay.
So that, that was the only item, the plan I don't want to contribute at this time.
Yep.
The rest of the items, if I've been able to figure it, we're gonna, I don't see a problem with it.
We added shredding services now. Shredding services. You added that this year. I need to take it from something else last year.
She got two, two bodies. So.
Oh, that's right, it's supposed to be.
She's got the six floor and the one on the.
Okay, so that wasn't.
Callie, um, is there anything else on the regular?
Not on the, not on the first one.
Um, Jack, uh, we talked last year about doing a human fund for the election.
There wouldn't be a human fund, it would just be a county fund, humans on it.
Right, a, a non-reverting fund.
Right. We would just set a tax rate.
Right. And then that way we can pick the highs and lows out of the budgeting and given next year not, you know, elections, it'd be a good year to seed it. So that.
We just need to advertise it as we're doing our budget here. We just need to make it its own fund and set a rate on it, that's what we adopt. We haven't advertised yet, so that's, we didn't want to advertise until after we've been through this. Right? That's all we need to do.
From a logic perspective, do you think that makes sense?
It's six of one, half dozen of the other, because they're all part of the same levy.
Well, the, the problem I have from a budgeting, you go from a hundred and, last year was a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars to zero this year.
But, but you could, but you could maintain a budget in, in there, it's just not spent. It would be the same difference. In other words, on the, on next year, it's gonna be an off year, there's not gonna be an election, so you could maintain a budget.
Right. But it's just hard to keep track when it's all going in. It is.
I mean, it's, yeah, it, it, it's six of one, half dozen of another, because it's all the same money, because they're part of the same levy. It's just whether you want to see a fund that shows a cash balance in it. Or you want to show the department over here that's got corporations set to hold cash balance. It's however you, you want to view it. One way's not right or wrong. Some counties, there are a few counties who have an election fund and there are a vast majority who don't. So it's, it's just your, your personal preference. You want to see it sat there every year, they'd still budget, they'd still have to budget their amount, they couldn't not budget anything.
Right.
Or you, or you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to keep a, a tax rate on it.
Such fluctuation, you know, and then, so I mean, I just foresee, if you were in a, in a downer economy, you know, just like we're going into. And you didn't know that you're gonna have an extra two hundred thousand dollar expense, you know, it's just, you know. I would rather see that, take some of those ebbs and flows in.
If it was gonna help county general, I could see the, see the business, but if it's not, because you've got a tax rate. I'm not sure, it's the lower county general's revenue. Tax rate on, when you put the tax rate on it, it's gonna pull that, that much levy.
Does it have to be a property tax rate to establish a fund?
What, where else you don't fund it? I mean, what, you're on, it's being funded with, with property tax dollars. In order to fund it with property tax dollars, you have to set a rate and establish a fund if you want them sent there.
Well, I can put it out of the income tax.
You can't, you, then you just budget out of income tax. You can't take money from one, like, from a fund and put it in another fund. Like public safety, income tax is put in a public safety fund and it has to be spent from there, no matter what you spend at all. Added money has to be spent from the added fund, the income tax from the added fund. So in order to fund the election, you've got to use your property tax side of it. Cause there are no revenues that come in, there is no income tax for election. So you've got to use part of this levy over here, just like you do the health fund. Except the health fund has fees that goes in there to assist theirs. Or just like reassessment. In the olden days, reassessment had a rate and set there, but now that's gone, it's now all part of the levy. But they keep it separate just because they're tracking reassessment. But it, 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 you know, before it had, every ten years it had a mass amount. This, this one doesn't, it's just one year out of four, it doesn't have anything.
Well, I mean, so twenty twenty-two is gonna be the bite year for us, I mean, when we kick it on the chin. For probably the, the most impactful field in twenty twenty-two. And if we don't fund this this year and then do by the, next year, it's gonna sting more.
Right, I mean, it really, it makes no difference if you put a department, if you, if you budget it in county general in the off year. Or if you create a fund with a tax rate and budget it there, it's the same, because it's the same money. It's just whether it's from here or here. So the, in essence, the easiest thing, because we don't have a rate already, is just to say continually fine.
Well.
A portion of here.
It's hard to compare the two, because right now we're budgeting off of a, a presidential election year and our total county general budget's eight million.
She couldn't look at, she couldn't look at. Lie on there, department head to tell you what they, yeah, she can look at two years ago and see what expenses were.
So this year, we have a two hundred thousand dollar expense, a hundred and sixty thousand dollar expense, and our total budget is eight hundred, hers eight ninety dollars. Next year, we're gonna have zero expense. And if that, and let's just say it's a different council, that council says, oh, last year's budget's eight million. Uh, we're gonna, you know, try to keep a flat budget at eight million. Well, you just took a hundred and sixty off, you can spend another hundred and sixty and then, you know.
But that's why you go ahead and continue to budget in the off year. You don't leave her, but you don't take her budget to zero. You go ahead and budget in the off year. We have an advertise, so we can put it in there.
Yeah, that might be another option, but.
Are you getting what he's saying? Rather than, rather than not doing anything, go ahead and budget it so it's in there, stagnant, no one's gonna spend it. Commissioners still have to authorize expenditures, which there wouldn't be any, because you're not gonna have to pay for all the places, you're not gonna pay for ballots and you're not gonna pay for all those things. So go ahead and budget it so that it doesn't cramp out. And have the heaven blow, and just leave the budget in there.
Now, when, when is the, when is our deadline?
We have to have everything in Gateway, I. And that's the advertising, we have to do that. I think there's a six of ten. Heartfelt appearing. So we have to have everything in Gateway before, before Labor Day. To make our decisions, so we can have it made next week as well, next week. Not next week, the week after, is when I was. The first week is, we need to, we need a final decision before September.
I do, because if, even though we do budget year in, year out, and if we don't use it, that's extra money, then we.
Right, around there, yeah.
Right, well, and, and like, you know, some mistakes have been, have occurred in the past where people budgeted, thought they had money and then, you know, wham bam. Uh, you know. It all dries up. Well, I mean, these things where you have these fluctuating, and you're really not taking it out, you are taking it out of county general, but.
You are.
But it's not really, because it's.
Yeah, you are, because it's, because the revenue's coming out.
Oh, you're, well, I mean, if, if you were looking at a balance, you could read the same way. You've got, you've got the same end and the same balance. It's just.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
You're just moving it over, right?
Right, but it's, it's revenue coming out of county general.
Right.
Putting in the election fund.
Right, but.
Or it's keeping the election department in county.
The revenue and the expense are both being moved by the same balance.
Correct.
So it's, it's.
Except, except in the year, right now, you're saying there's zero for next year, so.
Right, well, almost zero.
Right pocket, left pockets.
Other than your money.
But I'd rather not have fluctuation at county general, so you had better chance to budget it, that, or, or more accurate.
I get the consistency thing.
Yeah.
But it'd just be a matter of a line item that says off your budget and put a dollar amount in there that keeps you steady.
Yeah. My fear is people look at that county general fund and then, like, oh, this county general fund's up two hundred thousand dollars, our, our, our cash balance up two hundred thousand dollars plus spending. You know what I mean? That, that concerns me.
Yeah, I get it. Put it in a different fund, so any, any revenue that she brings in, like reporting or reports or selling, whatever. I mean, I know it's very moneyed, but does that, that go into that fund? Only election money. Yeah, is she, what revenue would she get? Well, where she built the towns, that would go back into it, right, same as it does county general, selling, um, basically costs, things like that. If not very much, I'm just wondering, like, yeah, that would, I'm turning this up, whatever you're working, she needs to remember that. For ease factor, it's better in my opinion to legal where it is. But for visual, like you, the visual is easier to see too, so.
Well, chat about that later, Callie's gonna have to sit here and listen to this.
Well, the council's gonna know what, why it's a ban. I think that's how I feel, I mean, yeah.
I would certainly hope they would.
Yeah, and if somebody came in and asked, we'd just say, well, we didn't have elections here. Yeah. Anyone. That's the easiest way to do it.
Yeah, I'm good. Anything, or you have one other one, don't you? Donation?
For education.
Yeah. Do I have a question on that? Thanks, Callie. Judge, you have to get back to court.
I do.
Yeah? Can you come in?
Thank you. Be merciful.